I'd like to call the June meeting of the Suffolk City Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Creekmore for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We ask that you will be in our midst and for your blessings to help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to continue to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way, and let us continue to give our thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Finally, guide us, guide each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions as we work for the city to accomplish our goals this day. Amen.
Ms. Pennington, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hicks?
Chairman Singleton?
Here.
And Commissioner Staler?
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Are there any corrections to the May meeting of the minutes for the May meeting? If not, they will stand as presented. This afternoon, we have three public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is rezoning request RZN 2023-007 conditional. Ms. Pennington, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Res zoning request RZN 2023-007 conditional submitted by Bob Arnett, Coastal Virginia Partners LLC applicant, on behalf of Richard M. Perry Jr., Big Bear LLC and White Marsh Market LLC property owner, in accordance with Sections 31-304 and 31-305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from B2 general commercial district, general commercial district zoning, to RU12 conditional residential urban 12 zoning district and B2 conditional general commercial zoning district for the property located at 1226 White Marsh Road, zoning map 35 parcels 168D, 168D*2. A portion of zoning map 35 parcel 168D approximately 6.557 acres is being proposed to be rezoned from B2 to RU12 conditional. Approximately 0.537 acres of zoning map 35 parcel 168D is being proposed to be rezoned from B2 to B2 conditional. Zoning map 35 parcel 168D*2 is proposed to be rezoned from B2 to B2 conditional. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress voting borough. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the central growth area, Core Support Use District. When you act upon this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request RZN 2023-007 conditional. Staff Planner Amy Murvine will present the staff's report.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of Planning Commission. This request before you today is to rezone property located at 1226 White Marsh Road from B2 general commercial to RU12 conditional residential urban 12 and B2 conditional. The properties are located within the Core Support District Central Growth Area. The subject properties are located at 1226 White Marsh Road, tax map 35 parcels 168D and 168D*2, totaling approximately 7.5 acres. The properties are currently zoned B2 general commercial. Detached single-family dwellings are located to the north, south, and west-zoned RU residential urban and RLM residential low-medium density. The Children's Center is located to the east-zoned B1 neighborhood commercial. The applicant proposes to rezone approximately 6.5 acres from B2 to RU12 conditional and the remaining approximate 1.5 acres from B2 to B2 conditional. The proposed rezoning to RU12 conditional is to allow the maximum development of 78 condominium units, and the remaining B2 conditional is to allow for future commercial development at the intersection of White Marsh Road and Davis Boulevard. The applicant has proffered six conditions in support of this request. The first proffer limits the development of no more than 78 condominium units. Proffers two through five pertain to the size and materials related to the proposed residential units. Lastly, proffer number six pertains to traffic improvements. The preliminary layout shown here was not proffered. The development of no more than 78 condominium units would equate to a maximum density of 12 dwelling units per acre. The RU12 zoning district is intended to allow a mix of residential unit types and densities to provide a balance of housing opportunities while maintaining neighborhood compatibility. The remaining B2 portion would allow for a commercial use within the residential neighborhood. At the time of the application was submitted, there was surplus capacity at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, sufficient enough to absorb any potential impacts to the schools generated from this request. Staff believes the proposed request meets the intent of the provisions and aligns with the goals and objectives of the 2035 comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed zoning is consistent with the surrounding land use patterns. Therefore, staff recommends approval with the proffered conditions of rezoning request RZN 2023-007. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Murvine. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good evening or good afternoon, Chairman Singleton, members of the Planning Commission and city staff. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address, 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. I'm here today with Bob Arnett, members of the Coastal Developer Team, who are here to answer any questions that you might have of this project. I want to thank the city staff for working with us. This has been a really exciting opportunity for us to redevelop or propose a plan to redevelop the shopping center. It's a former food line that closed a number of years ago, and as many of you know, there have been a number of conditional use permit requests that have come through the Planning Commission over the years that have been approved, trying to sustain the shopping center. But really, at the end of the day, where we are today is this shopping center is in need of being redeveloped. And if you've seen the site, it's mostly impervious surface, so it's mostly concrete, asphalt. And if you look at the site plan, you'll see stormwater management, you know, lots of opportunities to capture stormwater. So that's one of the things that I wanted to highlight today, is this will really help facilitate the water quality and quantity. Both will be stored on the property in accordance with modern standards. So that should be a big improvement for the area in heavy rain events. We are reserving the corner of White Marsh Road for about an acre for B2 uses. We don't know just yet what will go there, but we think it's important to reserve a commercial component to this development. About six acres is proposed to be zoned RU12. And what the project will consist of is attached and detached, potentially attached and detached condominium units that will be offered for sale. We estimate that the sale price, for those who know this, will be about $300,000 per unit. Now, there are a couple of proffers that are being proposed as well, that you heard Amy talk about, that will be a big improvement, essentially for the traffic impact analysis that has a left turn at Portsmouth Boulevard, just drove through the corridor. That turn lane really needs to be extended. So I know this proffered with a number of projects, but we'll certainly do that if no one else does. In the final minutes, I just want to talk a little bit about outreach. The applicants have done a really good job at outreach to the community. I'm sure there are people that we missed, but we talked to a number of civic leagues, presidents, and individuals in the community where we did our level best to try to be an open book and be transparent with the community, and I believe that most of the people that we talked to support the project. With that, I do want to leave a letter of support that we received from the Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance from Dr. Anita Lewis. I'll leave that in your basket. Thank you. I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Does anyone else would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Hearing none? Ma'am?
Good afternoon. I live on White Marsh Road, right across the street from where they intend to do this project. I wasn't notified about it, or I didn't know anything about it until they put the sign up. My concern is there's a lot of traffic on White Marsh Road. We have a lot of tractor trailers now coming down the road. And with the other neighborhoods, we just have a lot of traffic now down there. So my concern is that when they put these condominiums up, how is it going to affect my property? Because I live right on the corner of White Marsh Road and Lake Kennedy Drive, right next to the shopping center. So we have new neighbors that just moving in across the street that weren't able to be here today, but was also concerned about how this is going to affect the neighbors that are already there? Because we have so much traffic there and fire and rescue also. How is this, it's a lot of that that's going to the apartments behind there every day? And it's just in the summer, it's a lot going on there. And I just wanted to know how is it's going to impact us far as the road, them taking care of the road, the tractor trailers and trucks that are coming through there now are turning up. Matter of fact, across the street from me, Mrs. Glover, it's a dip there that the trucks have made, and every time they go by, we can hear that dip inside the home, every time it hits, those big trucks. So you're talking about bringing in more traffic, more trucks. I don't have a problem with the building of more homes. It's just that you're putting so many condominiums. You're talking about 78 condos in that area. And we just have brand-new homes put up right there. What is it, the new project that they just built, Larry?
Yeah, what is it? Who put that there?
Well, it's a new, they just built new homes right there on the corner, the city. Who built them?
Habitat.
Habitat, yes. That's what I was trying to think of. Excuse me. Habitat just built all those homes right behind us, right upon us. I've been there on that property for over 52 years, and it's just my concern that it just keeps squeezing and squeezing. You know, how is this going to affect the remaining neighbors that have been there and the elderly that live around there? That's my concern, because that's a lot to put, 78 different families right there in that area, that traffic, that amount. It's a lot of traffic now during the holidays. There's a lot going on there when it's Fourth of July and all that. Any holiday, it's a lot. So my concern is how they're going to, how is it going to affect us with traveling, with getting home, so much traffic, all those cars? It's at least two cars to a family, just in that square. You're talking about putting in 78 condos. That's my concern.
Can you give us your name, please?
Excuse me?
Will you give us your name?
Marjorie Cole.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
And this is my husband, Larry.
What she was saying about the traffic on White Marsh Road, Lake Kennedy, is one way in and one way out. So everybody got to come in and go the same way out. Where we live at, that's the last way out.
Excuse me, sir. Could you speak at the microphone? Thank you.
What she concerned about, on that road, it's one way in and one way out. Okay? There's no other way to get in there. And Lake Kennedy Drive right there, once you pass Lake Kennedy Drive, there's no way out. You got to go to Carolina. So all that traffic going to be coming down one way, in and out. There's no other way to get out. The only other way to get out is go through Lake Kennedy, go through the neighborhood. So you're going to put a lot of traffic into Lake Kennedy neighborhood. They're the only way in there, two ways in, two ways out. Sixth Street and White Marsh Road, that's the only two ways back in there. So you're going to have all that traffic and that neighborhood back there and on that corner. And you're going to have a lot of accidents, we see a lot of accidents on that corner right there. They don't knock down Mirbach down twice. And I hate to say it, one of them knocked it down with a police car. So it's a lot of accident on that corner, because that's it right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Cole. Is anyone else in opposition?
My name is Anita Glover. I reside at 1213 White Marsh Road. I've been there for at least 60 years. So you know, I've seen a lot of actions going on in that area. I oppose any more attractions for traffic. It's not, and one thing that's bad is the road is so narrow, it can't support any more traffic. And what else was I was going to ask you? Have there been any questions, possible renters? Do you have any possible renters for that area? Do you know who's going to come there? That's important to us, to keep the neighborhood as gorgeous as it has been through the years that I have been there. We don't want any changes that's going to affect our livelihood. Thanks for your listening ear.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Is anyone else to speak in opposition? Hearing none? Mr. Palmer, he's got five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of items. So one of the things that you do when you change the zoning from B2 for seven acres and you change it to a residential zoning district for six acres and you reduce the B2 zoning to one acres, you significantly reduce the potential for traffic generation on the site. And so what's being proposed with the residential development of 78 condominium units is a significant reduction in traffic over the continuation or potentially redevelopment of the site using the B2 zoning. So I certainly understand right now that the community feels very little impact from traffic on the site, but if it were redeveloped using the B2 zoning, a significant amount of traffic, increasing amount of traffic would be generated over what's being proposed today. And I think also that many people that live around the shopping center will see a benefit from this. I mean, living next to a declining, almost vacant shopping center with no prospects, and the only prospect of being a derelict building, I think living around that certainly shows up in people's property taxes. And so I think with the approval of this project tonight, or this afternoon, you'll see the potential for increasing values, contributing to the property, contributing to tax, to the tax base, rather than a drag on community property values, which I believe the shopping center is today and will be tomorrow as well. And so with that, I'd certainly want to apologize to Ms. Cole, certainly not our intent to miss her in our outreach efforts, but we're certainly an open book, and we'll reach out to her. If the Planning Commission chooses to vote on this today, we will certainly reach out to her between now and the day that City Council hears this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Does anyone else from your group have any answers to rebuttal? Okay, thank you. We're now closed the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, motion? Or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I was a little bit confused. It looks like on the maps that are associated with this is that there is an exit to Lake Kennedy as a proposal, and also one to the south or to the east on that picture. There's also an exit there in addition to White Marsh Road. So there are three exits or entrances in this community. It's not just one. So I don't know if that answers anybody's question.
Any other comments? Questions? Motion?
I'll make, excuse me, I'll make a motion for approval, RZN 2023-007.
And that's with the six conditions?
Yes, correct. With the six.
Second?
Second.
Got a second motion? Any discussion to motion?
Yeah, I want to discuss the motion. I have some questions. I just wanted to make sure it was a motion first, so I knew which way it was going. I guess I ask the city staffer, I just had a quick question. This property is a box, like a square. How many communities surround this piece of property?
Just like the residential neighborhoods?
Yeah.
So it surrounds, here, let me go back. So to the northwest and south, those are all separate residential neighborhoods, and then the Children's Center is on the right. So the rest of it is all just residential.
So it's basically all residential except for the Children's Center?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And it is the city's view that commercial is not good in this area?
That's a great question.
Okay, okay. Well, let me, well, let me hold tight. I asked the developer, thank you. I won't put you on the spot like that. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine.
I went to you like that. I apologize.
I'll answer to the best I know.
Yes. I ask Mr. Palmer.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Palmer, make sure I understand. You have Lake Kennedy to the north, I'm going to use this, where you suffer gardens. We have Walnut Hill, we have Cypress Farms, we have Stratford Terrace, and then we have the old Parker Riddick and Cypress Manor. And I know Cypress Manor's been resurrected. And so with all that residential, 78 more homes. And also in the pipeline, if I'm not mistaken, it's 160, 170 homes. And also, it's another RC south of what we developed back in, rezoned back in 2022. I think it's another three homes south, 300 south of that. So with all of those houses and also pipeline houses, the best use of the land going forward is to go from commercial to residential. Make sure I understand.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so the answer to your question is, in my opinion, yes. And you can kind of see that over the course of the last few years, where you've seen conditional use permit requests come in for a nightclub, for assemblies, for churches. And usually, shopping centers that start seeing those types of requests come in are shopping centers that aren't vibrant. And certainly, there is a need for commercial in this community, and that's why we have an acre set aside for future commercial uses to serve the neighborhood at a more of a community scale. We don't believe that seven acres of commercial is appropriate. One acre, in my opinion, is an appropriate amount of commercial space for community-based users.
Make sure I understand that with Lake Kennedy, Walnut Hill, Stratford Terrace, Cypress Farms, 170 that we rezoned two years ago, two apartments, one acre of commercial is enough?
Well, you got to understand the context, too. I mean, we're close to downtown, you're close to other retail area, there's a, it's a Family Dollar, I believe, that's just up White Marsh. So I mean, there are other opportunities, but at this location and given the history on the site, we don't think, I don't think that six acres of commercial is appropriate. Now, if it had a different history, I might agree with you. But I think, given the history of the conditional use permit request, I think that's a strong indicator that seven acres is too much.
So, okay, so let me ask this question. This is where I'm confused. I went back to the presentation that was given in 2022, and you was not a part of that presentation. And we was rezoning 35 acres of land, 170 homes in this corridor. This is what, now I'm confused, because the argument that was made during that presentation was we do these 170 because it's going to bring light- was we do these 170 because it's going to bring life back to the shopping center. Now we're two years later and the argument now is abandon the shopping center. So was it not true in '22 or is it not true now? Because I'm, I'm really confused.
So the, so the argument the developer made then was that it would, that approving those homes would revitalize this particular shopping center?
Yes. According to the conversation they had at City Council, it was a, a direct contrast to Ms. Robin Whitley gave, gave up and gave a speech. And Ms. Whitley's argument was that there was a food desert in this area. And she was like, she was concerned. And so the argument was we need more rooftops in here to revitalize and bring life back to the shopping center. So here we are two years later and the argument is it's too much commercial. We're going to rezone it from seven to one.
Well, I, so I don't make promises like that when I, when I present these projects because we don't know the correlation between approving projects and what will happen specifically to, to specific property like this. So I, and I don't know what, what the rationale was, but what I can tell you is when I looked over the history of, of the conditional use permit request, what I see is a declining shopping center. And it today, it sits there. I think we have four tenants in the building that I don't believe pay rent. And so that tells me, put all those factors together, and that tells me we've got too much commercial at this particular location. And if it were different, I mean, if the, if the history were different and you weren't seeing those conditional use permits come in for a nightclub and assemblies, I, I think I would, I would agree with you.
But you think it's too much? One is enough? Okay. Thank you.
Any others question to motion? Is, I'll give you a call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, prepare to vote. Cast your votes. Chairman, the motion passes by a vote of five to two.
Congratulations, Mr. Palmer and Mr. Arnett. This will go to City Council on July 17th with a recommendation for approval from this body. Next item on our agenda today is the rezoning request, RZN 2024-004 Bell Harbor. Penner, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2024-004 Bell Harbor, submitted by John H. Peterson, Bell Harbor, JV APMTS LLC applicant on behalf of Canaan Properties, Inc., property owner. In accordance with Sections 31-304 and 31-305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from O&amp;I Office Institutional Zoning District to RU18 Residential Urban 18 Zoning District for property located at 5414 Plummer Boulevard, zoning map 13F Parcel 31*11 and zoning map 13 Parcel 16. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zone O&amp;I Office Institutional Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Core Support Use District. When you act upon this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2024-004. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to amend the approved Bell Harbor master plan by modifying the designated land use from office to residential and vice versa. These subject properties are located along Plummer Boulevard and are further identified as Tax Parcel 13F*3*11 and Tax Parcel 13*16. Tax Parcel 13F*3*11 is currently zoned OI Office Institutional and designated for office use, while Tax Parcel 13*16 is presently zoned RU Residential Urban and designated for the development of up to 144 multifamily dwellings. In September of 2001, approval was received to change, to change and rezone approximately 343.5 acres for the creation of the Bell Harbor Master Plan Development. The master plan was further modified in April of 2003 and 2005. Details of those changes have been outlined in staff's report. In 2009, an engineering plan was approved for the extension of Plummer Boulevard. And lastly, in January of 2009, approval was received to modify the proffered conditions that limited the number of units allowed for Track 2A and 2B to 58 units and increased the number of units permitted on these tracks to 144 multifamily units. The applicant is currently requesting to amend the approved Bell Harbor master plan in order to rezone approximately nine acres. Track 11 of the master plan will be rezoned from OI Office Institutional to RU18 Residential Urban. Additionally, the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 16 acres, which make up Tracks 2A and 2B of the master plan from RU Residential Urban to OI Office Institutional. Previously, when the master plan was established, Tracks 2A and 2B were originally rezoned to RM Residential Medium Density. As a part of the 2005 rezoning amendment, both Tracks 2A and 2B were rezoned to RU Residential Urban. Additionally, when the master plan was established, Track 11 was originally zoned B2 General Commercial. As a part of the 2003 rezoning amendment, Track 11 was rezoned to OI Office Institutional. The applicant is seeking to relocate the developmental rights of Tracks 2A and 2B to Track 11. There is no proposed change in the number of units, the 144 units that were previously approved as a part of the 2009 rezoning request. Tracks 2A and 2B will receive the existing OI zoning from Track 11. Therefore, no additional residential units are proposed as a part of this request. While Tracks 2A and 2B are presently zoned RU, Track 11 is proposed to be rezoned to RU18 as the relocation of the 144 units to the site would equate to a proposed density of 16.4 units per acre versus the 10.9 units per acre that was originally approved. Therefore, the RU18 zoning designation would be appropriate and more in keeping with the proposed density. Supplemental information was provided by the applicant that states the justification to move the developmental rights to Track 11 are visibility, improved access, and adjacency to like uses and avoidance of wetlands disturbance. The Core Support Use District recommends a density of 13 to 24 dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing to relocate the 144 multifamily units to, from Tracks 2A and 2B onto the parcel identified as Track 11, which would result in a density of 16.4 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the recommended density for the Core Support Use District. Staff has evaluated this request in accordance with the guidelines and principles established within the Comprehensive Plan and offers the following. Policy 2.1, keep developmental focus, keep development focused in designated growth areas in the city. The Bell Harbor Master Plan Development is located within the Northern Growth Area and is designated as Core Support Use District, and the original master plan was approved back in 2001. The proposal in question does not change the number of approved units within the Bell Harbor Master Plan Development and thus complies with the intent of the originally submitted plan, which creates a mixed-use development consisting of a variety of commercial, institutional uses, and residential uses and varied, at varying densities. Policy 2-3, promote the balance of residential and non-residential land uses. Commercial and institutional uses within the Bell Harbor Development have been planned where appropriate within close proximity to Bridge Road. Usage such as the Temple Beth El Church, Comfort Suites Hotel, and Centerra Bell Harbor Medical Center have all been established and are located at the front of the development along the Bridge Road Corridor and Plummer Boulevard. And as previously stated, Tracks 2A and 2B will receive the existing OI zoning district. City water and sewer are available to the subject parcels and capacity exists. The Department of Public Utilities has no objections to the request at this time. Water and sewer models will be required at the time of site plan submittal. The development of the site is anticipated to be accommodated through implementation of the current, current stormwater criteria. This will likely involve the addition of new stormwater BMPs onsite and/or retrofitting the existing regional BMPs. The project will be reviewed and confirmed to comply with all applicable state and local stormwater regulations during developmental site planning review. Therefore, the Department of Public Works Engineering has no concerns at this time. The Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering has reviewed the request and has concerns regarding planned improvements that have not yet been completed in accordance with the master plan, specifically the extension of Plummer Boulevard, which would occur with the development of Tracks 2A and 2B. The extension of Plummer Boulevard from its terminus onsite to Town Point Road has not been dedicated as right away and right away not constructed at this time. The reasoning stated by the applicant for seeking this rezoning is primarily based on delineated wetlands present on Tracks 2A and 2B, which does not necessarily represent a change in circumstance to what existed at the time of the original rezoning and subsequent amendments. While additional information related to engineering and surveying has verified the existence of these environmentally restrictive areas, they would have been present at the time of the original rezoning. As such, the desire of the development is to move forward with the approved multifamily units by shifting them to a parcel with fewer environmental constraints. This shift does not impact or negate the need for the extension of Plummer Boulevard. The 144 multifamily units in question have been analyzed for impacts to public facilities as a part of the initial and subsequent amendments to the master plans for Bell Harbor. As these units have already been approved, there are no impacts to analyze as it refers to the schools. As a part of this request, the applicant has chosen to amend Propers 13 through 17, which were previously established through the original rezoning request and subsequent amendments. Those changes have been fully outlined in detail in staff's report and are shown on this slide as well. In conclusion, staff finds that this master plan amendment request for the Bell Harbor Master Plan Development is consistent with the principles of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. Specifically, this request allows for the swap of the developmental rights from Tracks 2A and 2B to Track 11 and vice versa. As such, staff recommends approval of this master plan amendment with the submitted proffered conditions. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman Singleton, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tuck Bowie, and I'm with Bell Harbor JV Apartments LLC, the applicant, and it's my honor to stand in front of this commission today to represent the owner of the property, Canaan Properties Incorporated, on this rezoning request. I've got with me today three members of Canaan Properties, Rabbi Philip McNeil, Ezra Locke, and Michael, Michael Ringwood. They were sitting next to me, and they're here today along with me to answer any questions that Planning Commission members may have during this public hearing. As all of you are aware, these owners have been on this piece of property for well over a decade, and their original master plan, which was back in the days called Bellevue, was done 60 years before the master plan for Harborview was approved. What that tells me and tells you is the historic value and the legacy of this piece of property. And they have been waiting patiently for the right opportunity to be able to promote and move forward their vision for the development of this piece of property. And I would suggest the timing is right now with the development, particularly the commercial development that has occurred out of this corridor, there's a real need for additional housing, and what this will do is provide that opportunity now. What we are, what this application is, is in my estimation, very simple and very straightforward. And I want to thank staff for working with us to be able to bring this forward today. You've got a very competent and professional staff, and the city of Suffolk is very fortunate to have that to provide you all with the information and staff reports that you get for you all to make an informed decision on the applications that come before you. As I suggested, this, this application is very simple and very straightforward. All we're, all we're asking to do is to amend the already approved master land use plan and to relocate the existing development rights that are already on the piece of property. We're not asking for any increase in density. We're not asking for any additional units. We're merely moving one use from one parcel to another and the use on that parcel to the parcel that we're moving these development rights from. My hope is that you realize and see the value and the vision that the Canaan Property folks have and that you will support this application by recommending approval to City Council at their July meeting. And I'll stand by with the Canaan Property folks to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Is anyone else who's speaking in favor of this request? Seeing none. Is there anyone in opposition to this request? Come up, ma'am.
Good afternoon, planning. It's been a while since I've been here. How's everybody? First of all, I just want to show you the picture that's posted for the public hearing. Now.
Give us your name first, please.
You don't know me. Carolyn White.
Thank you, Ms. White.
From Pewsville, 4216 Coltrane Avenue in the city of Pewsville, Virginia. You don't remember me, Mr. Singer?
I remember you, but I couldn't pull it up right then.
All right. First of all, the orange sign is showing when you come into Belleville. Everybody see that? I'll leave it here. Coming out of Pewsville, there's a blank white sign. Public hearings, I hear from the prior ones that we've had already, there is a section in the Virginia Code that when you're having a public hearing, it's free to the public. That's what I thought. But when I came out of Pewsville and saw that blank sign, I didn't know what it was. I just thought it was something trash people put up there because they throw trash around that curb all the time. So, but then I go out of the neighborhood, so I see a blank sign. I don't necessarily come back the same way, so I never saw the orange sign. Then my husband told me that somebody had contacted him, and there was a letter from the Planning Commission, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development. And I said, did everybody get one? So I called the neighbors across the street, right there coming in the curb. And they said, no, they didn't get one. But the neighbor on this side in Pewsville, coming around the curb, she sent us the letter. Did y'all know what the letter said? Anybody? Well, let me read some of it. I don't know if I got 15 minutes directly, but it says, "The city of Suffolk is dated June the 4th, and it's the property owner." So then it says, "Please be advised that the following request has been filed with the city of Suffolk and will be heard," and all the little codes and whatever, "on, on the 18th, which is today." And then it says the request and whatever, and then it says, "Should you have any interest in this matter, your urge to attend each of the public hearings, and this is the only notice you will receive notifying you of these public hearings." And it says, "Please feel free to contact Brittany Collier, current planning manager, should you have any questions pertaining to the above request." It says, "You are receiving this notification because our records," listen now, "our records indicate you own property adjoining the proposed use. All of the property owners within this area may not have received the notice, so please feel free to share this notice with other property owners." Is that the way y'all do the city now? I thought maybe somebody would contact the Civic League and say, "We're having a public hearing. Would you like to come out and find out what it's about?" But no, you want her to be the carrier, the mail carrier to Pewsville because her house may be affected, her land may be affected. And not only that, I don't know if you all been to Pewsville, but we still ain't got our stormwater yet. We still don't have the ditches closed up yet. We don't have any sidewalks. And we on the low road now that they said they blocked off with signs coming into Shoulders Hill Road from Bennett's Pasture Road saying trucks don't come down. Hill Road from Bennett's Pasture Road, saying trucks don't come down this way. So the same thing goes for this way, because you're coming into Pewsville on Townpoint or Pewsville Road to bring in heavy trucks, to bring in all of this stuff. But we still haven't gotten what we want. So how can we be the news reporters for you all when we don't even get a Suffolk paper? We don't even have a little stand where we can go and pick up the free papers. We have to go to Chesapeake. You give them free stuff, you give us nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Good afternoon. My name is Wayne White, forty-two sixteen Coltrane Avenue. I'm the husband of that lady that just spoke. But my, my one thing I'm going to say is that with the, all these new houses you're going to build there, how you going to get off on Bridge Road? They have said nothing about the little Bellevue or Harbor Road, that road that comes between the hotel that's been closed off. That needs to be opened up before you even think about doing anything for what's putting the houses in there, because those people, if they got to come back around the Bridge Road to get out, it ain't going to happen. So Harbor, Bellevue, the road that go that way needs to be opened up before you decide to let anybody build any more houses there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is anyone else in opposition? Mr. Bowie, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Quite honestly, I'm not sure how to respond to some of this, but I will answer this question. As far as the signage is concerned, we were required to put up four signs at designations that were given to us by the planning department. We put them up, we took pictures of them, I sent them to Brittany. She confirmed that she'd got them, so the signs are up there. Relative to the road extension, that's a discussion that's been ongoing, and we are going to continue to have that discussion with the staff before, and as, as your staff report indicated, that we wanted to separate that from the rezoning. If we're successful in getting the rezoning, the staff report says that before we can get any approvals, we need to sit down and negotiate and work with, with, with the transportation folks to figure out how Plumber Boulevard is going to be handled. So we will do that, but I don't think that should be an issue in terms of preventing this rezoning from going forward. And again, if there's any further questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Anyone else to speak in rebuttal? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions, or motion?
I got a question. Mr. Bowie, could I get you to come back up, please? So the way I take this is, we've taken one project and we're basically just switching them, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I mean, it's still approved for the same amount of housing, correct?
We're not asking for any, any additional density.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we're just basically moving one, you know, one across the street?
Yeah, and I would suggest that, and I know what the staff report says about the environmental situation and the wetlands, but I would suggest from the time that the master plan for Bell Harbor was approved and where we are today, those, those environmental standards have changed dramatically, and there are more significant wetlands. One of the concerns I have with the extension of Plumber Boulevard is the wetlands that it's gonna, the city's gonna have to deal with in order to be able to do that. So we did it for two reasons. The opportunity was there, there's better visibility at this parcel that we're moving these development rights to. It's at the corner of Levi Solomon Way and Plumber Boulevard. You get better visibility from Bridge Road. You avoid a lot of the wetland situation, and it allows the Canaan Properties to continue with their vision, to be able to provide much-needed housing in that area right now as opposed to having to wait. Thank you. Stay here for a minute in case somebody else has a question.
Any other question for Mr. Bowie while he's at the podium? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the application as a force, I move for approval.
I'll second.
Have a second, please. Any discussion on the motion? Spindinger, will you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, prepare to vote. Did...
Hold up, let a clear board for us.
Yeah, it doesn't show that till I hit start.
That's the old...
Yep. There we go. Perfect. Go ahead and cast your votes. Chairman, the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Spindinger. Mr. Bowie, and I don't want to misgive anyone the wrong title, so, but the group that's supporting this, you have our endorsement going forward on July seventeenth at City Next item on our agenda today is conditional use requests, use permit requests, CUP twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine, Holland Road Storage Facility. Ms. Spindinger, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine, Holland Road Storage Facility, submitted by Melissa Venable, Land Planning Solutions Agent, on behalf of John A. Wright, Waverton Associates applicant, on behalf of, I'm going to say this wrong, M. Ruddle, Barrow, property owner, in accordance with sections thirty-one dash three oh six, thirty-one dash four oh six, and thirty-one dash seven oh nine of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a mini warehouse on property located on Holland Road zoning map thirty-three B, parcel seven star eleven A. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zone B two, General Commercial Zoning District. The twenty thirty-five Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP twenty twenty-four zero zero nine. Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a mini warehouse use on Holland Road. The subject property is located within the Central Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use District and the Holy Neck Voting Borough. The subject parcel is located on the north side of Holland Road across from Beechwood Drive. This property, property is roughly two point three two acres in size. The north of the property are single-family detached uses, zoned residential low-medium. The south are single-family detached uses, zoned residential low, low-medium, and commercial properties, Zone B two. To the east are single-family detached uses, zoned residential low-medium and commercial properties, Zone B two, General Commercial Zoning District. And to the west are commercial properties, Zone B two, General Commercial Zoning District. The applicant has stated that the site has been designed with the parking and loading areas in the rear of the building so that they are less visible along the Holland Road corridor and with the perimeter landscape buffer being proposed along the northern and eastern property lines to provide separation from nearby residential uses. The applicant has further stated that ongoing residential growth in the central, in, in central Suffolk will increase the demand for indoor storage and believe that this is a suitable location for the proposed use. The proposed use will also encourage the development and improvement of surrounding properties while providing a needed resource for the surrounding community. The storage facility will have twenty-four hour video monitoring with office hours being Tuesday through Saturday from nine-thirty AM to six PM and a call center hours from eight AM to nine PM every day. Access to the site will be taken from a single entrance along Holland Road. The provided conceptual layout and elevations propose a three-story climate-controlled storage building with an outer appearance similar to a high-quality office building. Staff believes the proposed use of a mini warehouse is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhoods. All other departments have reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine with the conditions stated in staff report. I will stand by for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Who would like to come to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman Singleton and Commissioners. My name is Melissa Venable. My office address is fifty-eight fifty-seven Harbor View Boulevard in Suffolk. I'm here with Mr. Phil Smith and Mr. John A. Wright, my clients. The property that we are discussing is currently zoned B two. It once had a small hotel site in this location. From what I can tell, that came down in the early two thousands. The picture history isn't great, but it was, Mr. Singleton, I think you probably remember it, by as you're, as you're nodding your head. So there was, there was development on this B two site, and over the years, there's been different folks that have looked at it for another hotel motel type site, as well as some fast food. Ultimately, I'm happy with our proposal specifically because we are adjacent to three residential properties, and I think this makes a great transition use. As it was noted in the report, this is one of the lowest traffic generators. We have to provide four parking spaces only. We are providing a few more than that, but it's one of the lowest traffic generating uses. This use also allows, allows us to keep the SCOD buffers in place and also hold on to the, or preserve the tree buffers that are along that residential use as well as the northern, or the, the rear property boundary. We have some wetland areas that we won't be disturbing at the rear of the property, I think you saw on our site plan, as well as storm runner management. Sorry, I apologize. A letter was mailed out to our adjacent property owners. We looked to see if there was some type of civic league or some type of organized community, but we could not find that, so instead we mailed a letter to the adjacent properties. Nowadays, we can't go into the Yellow Pages and look for home phone numbers, so, and it's hard to find mobile phone numbers for residents, so the best way we knew how to reach out was through a letter, asking for folks if they had questions or if they just wanted to contact us, contact us to please do so. I believe that letter is in your package. We did not get any response in regard to that, but we did make an effort to communicate with our neighboring properties. You saw the three D images, which I can go back to, and I'm, I'm really, whoop, well, I shouldn't be touching buttons, apparently. There we go. The three D images, similar to what we did at the Bronco site. This will be three stories. It's about thirty-seven feet tall at the very top of the roof. It looks very much like an office building, has a small office location on the front of the building. Generally, again, it's, it's fairly quiet. And I think this, this makes a nice visual, it's a good visual look from Holland Road, adjacent to an existing retail site, a restaurant with some other resident, or some other commercial along Holland Road. I think this blends and again makes a nice transition from the residential to the commercial. As it was stated, the loading and the parking are at the rear of the site, so again, not visible from Holland and not to disturb the adjacent properties. The other thing that we may have noted is that there's no dumpster on-site, and that's to limit the noise and eliminate any debris on-site. Specifically, there'd be just containers within the, the caretaker's office that, and they would pull that out when trash pickup comes, but there will be no on-site dumpster. The hours operation, again, were noted, but I wanted to mention that there's also a twenty-four hour monitoring system that will notify the duty surveillance analyst if there's any hu, human motion detected. The analyst will reach out, or I'm sorry, will watch the live feed and evaluate if assistance is needed. This is all done in live time, so it also provides for another level of protection around those residential units and the building itself. There's also a call center available from eight AM to nine PM, and units can be accessed anytime during the day. As the staff report suggests, there is a need for this use, and I think, again, keeping this as a B two property and not looking to rezon it, but just looking for the conditional use permit is a positive effort on our part. Mr. Phil Smith is here also, and Mr. John Wright, if you have any questions. Thank you so much.
Is anyone else, come on up, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Phil Smith. I'm here with John Wright. We're with Waverton Associates. Our address is two hundred High Street in Portsmouth. I'm also a resident of Suffolk. I live on North James Drive in the Harborview section of Suffolk. Just wanted to give you a few quick highlights of this project, and for those of you who aren't familiar with our company, Waverton's been around since the nineteen nineties. We've, you're probably aware, we're primarily focused on multifamily development, but we also develop office, industrial, self-storage, we've done single-family subdivisions, and we typically target markets from Richmond to North Carolina. But most of our development, the last ten years or so, has been here in Hampton Roads and specifically in Suffolk, where we've built over a thousand housing units. We do have deep roots, so some of you may be familiar, the name Waverton came from the old Waverton Farm. It was a dairy farm on Shoulders Hill Road, which is now Bennett's Creek Park and some surrounding subdivisions. We are headquartered here locally. We do not contract build. We, everything we build, we own and we hold it long-term. We use local management, and that's important, important to us because they care about the quality of the property. One of our partners in this is actually a third-generation management company. They own thirty or forty facilities here in Hampton Roads. And I say all that just so you know, we do take pride of ownership in all of our projects. We do, we try to be good stewards within the community on all of our properties. Excuse me. For this location, we did engage a market study. We felt it was a good, good site. The market study found that not only was there a lack of supply, there's zero climate-controlled self-storage in this market within about a seven, eight mile radius. You have to go down fifty-eight, I think, towards Godwin Boulevard to get to the closest. And storage, as you are probably aware, has been shown to improve not just the quality, but the curb appeal of surrounding neighborhoods. We're taking what was a previously condemned property, converting it to what looks like a nice office building, investing close to ten million dollars, which will go on the tax rolls, and it's the lowest generating use within the B, traffic generating use in the B two zoning. So we're here to answer any questions, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Got two and a half minutes. Mr. Wright's not coming up? That's, here's the time for the proponents. Got opposition? Do you have anyone here in opposition to this request?
My name is Nunzio Misere. I, this is my first time here in front of a Planning Commission. I, I am in the restaurant business, and also we own a mini storage facility, Route Fifty-Eight LLC, that we purchased about six years ago, and we are headed mine to remodel little by little, but my restaurant was, the lease expired, so we moved to Alforno Pizzeria, you probably guys know, and has been a lot of struggle because of the road construction. So the lease expired, and Taco Bell is taking over the old location, and so in the new location, we about ninety-nine percent finished, and then we were also going to start working on the new, on the storage facility, fix up whatever needs to be fixed, painting and clean up and, and everything. That storage has been there for sixty years. The land next door, which is, these people own, they want to put a, they, they say a mini warehouse on the, on the red sign, but I end up, is ending, ending up to be a three-story building. Fairfield is full of houses. They're going to lose their privacy because they got a three-story building, you know, humongous building. It's not a mini storage. I think it's a maxed storage that they're trying to put next to my property, and I also, they will cut our throat. I've been using since the construction of the road, some money from the storage to pay bills for the restaurant because the lunch business is not there because all this tract... pay bills for the restaurant because the lunch business is not there because all these tractors and trailers and bulldozers are parked right there and go back and forth. We do business at nighttime, it's, thank God. But I'm against all this. The number one is because it hurting me. Number two is because people in the backyard, they can't, they don't have any more privacy on Fairfield because it's only two acres of land that they're using it, maybe two and a half, and the ones that taken all the trees out, everybody's in the, almost inside this big, humongous three-story warehouse. There is other, it's not zoned for warehouse. It's not zoned for storage. My storage is 60 years old and is grandfathered. Their storage, their storage, they're asking for a conditional use permit, which I would deny. Number two is because there is down the road a mile and a half, all these warehouses mostly empty, they can accommodate something like this. They don't want to go into a neighborhood and put a big building, three-story building like this. So there is another building on, down the road that's been sitting for sale for about three years, big building. I'm sure it's zoned proper for them. So I would be against for you to pass this conditional use permit for multiple reasons, not just for me. I know they're gonna, they're gonna take a lot of business from me. They're not gonna give you no more revenue to the city because it's a, it's a storage. I'd like to see a bank over there. We don't have a bank. All the road, Holland Road doesn't have a bank. I mean, so now we're gonna have a storage which it doesn't bring any, any business, and it's gonna be in people's yard, really. So I, this is the reason that I'm here. I, you know, I guess, I, no, I'm against it. So I have the right to be against it. Am I right? I do have the right, okay? And it's not zoned for storage, and it needs to be, it's zoned B2, and it needs to be a business there, not a three-story, humongous building. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, my voice is, I'm nervous, it's first time, and I speak loud sometimes. I might be a little bit deaf. So, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And I thank you for listening to me, and I thank you for everything you guys doing. You guys doing a great job. I know you listen to all kinds of complaint, and you probably got used to it, but this is very serious. Please do not give the conditional use permit to this project. Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience would like to speak in opposition? Three and nine. Ms. Venable, five-minute rebuttal of Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. Just to address a few of those comments. So I did go by and did meet with him one day and asked him, I gave him a copy of the information, showed him the picture of the same rendering, that one right there, asked him if he had any questions or concerns, and they called me. I want to differentiate something. We've had it happen before, too. What he has, or I believe the majority, are storage containers. They're not storage buildings. They're like the 20-foot containers you see on the back of a truck, and they're all over the site. Indoor climate-controlled storage does not compete with that type of storage. If you look at, I mean, market study after market study, you can, there are people out there who have a facility like that, that build climate-controlled storage on their property because it's just a different market. It's a different type of property you store in there. So I just, I wanted to make sure that was a clear point. It's like saying you can't have Burger King because there's a Wendy's. It's two different types of offerings. That's all. Thank you.
Any other? Nope. Yep?
Sir Tennessee.
That ends the time for rebuttal. Going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I have a question for Mr. Smith about the design, if you don't mind. This may just be naive, but so, those are actual windows all up the front of the building, correct? I just, that's just surprising to me for like a storage facility that you'd have like windows, like is it three levels of office in the front?
We would, we would love to have less windows. The city requires it for, for the looks. They're very expensive, so we always try to reduce the amount of windows. They always want us to have more. So what, we built a similar facility on Godwin Boulevard, and the windows we started off with, they kept adding and adding and adding because they wanted more windows. I might be wrong about that. Okay. Thank you. So it is, it adds a lot of cost, to be honest with you.
On the side, though, it looks like there are along the side, too. Is that because there's a road?
The back of the, I think that's the back of the building, which just isn't brick and windows.
Okay. So they're not all, I see, they're not all around the building?
Not the entire, there's one side of the building that I guess faces, yeah, you might be, I can't remember, is east or?
I'm sorry. So the very top elevation, what you see is the white, has the loading. That's the very rear of the building. That's where the loading door is and where the parking would be. So that's the very back of the building, and then both sides look similar, and you can see the side elevation on the very bottom of the three. The front elevation is the one that's in the middle. These are sketches at this point, so a little bit harder to depict, but the ordinance, you have a very strict ordinance for storage. The materials on this are hardy, brick veneer and a concrete-type veneer. So it's, I mean, in all ten purses, it looks like an office building. That's why the windows are required, and they actually look pretty great from, from your main roadways, but if you wanted to make a change in that ordinance, I bet you you'd have alliance clients that were very happy.
Like that there are actual windows and not like?
Yeah, there are actual windows. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
But thanks.
Got your answer? Got a motion?
I'll let someone else.
I'll make a motion for approval of CUP 2024-009.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Ms. Chairman, I would just make a kind of a follow-up comment. When I rode by and looked at this property and pulled up there, of course, the comments that the adjacent property owner made about the, the issues with the traffic on 58 with all the construction are well-received. In fact, I made a comment to someone that if I was able to live through getting back on 58 with the traffic conditions, I'd be here at this meeting. But it's, I was concerned originally when I saw this about the entrance onto the parcel, and I believe it'll, it'll tee into Beechwood Avenue, so there is a cut through there. Still concerned about anyone that would make a left turn out of this property, crossing the median and going, I guess, east, but it is commercial property, and there are other businesses along this way, so therefore, I guess we'll just have to look the other way for our traffic concerns.
Any other discussion? Okay. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning Commissioners, prepare to vote. Go ahead and vote. Thank you. Chairman, the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith and Ms. Venable. This will go to City Council on July 17th. Do we have any, I don't think we have any old business, new business? We have a status report.
Yes, sir. So at the May 15th City Council meeting, had a number of public hearing items. We had rezoning request, RZN 2023-011, conditional, which was the HRSD Willroy Pressure Reducing Station. That was approved with the proffers. We had rezoning request, RZN 2024-002, conditional, which was Parkwood. That was approved with amended proffers. The developer came in before the council meeting with some amended proffers. We had conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-025, which was the Wyonook Trail. City Council voted to table that item until the July 17th meeting. And finally, we had conditional use permit, CUP 2024-002, Parkwood, which was the complement application to the rezoning, which was for the Paul D. Camp, and that was approved with the conditions.
Yeah, I think you asked.
Yes, sir. So, yeah, so just some preliminary information for Planning Commission for your next meeting. Staff is working on some amendments to the parts of the zoning ordinance that deal with live entertainment. We're talking about some changes there, so we're gonna work through that over the next month and bring that back to you all for public hearing next month with some proposed changes to live entertainment requirements.
Commissioners, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a real, real quick comment. I just want to congratulate Mr. R. Ulysses Whitfield, longtime Suffolk bus driver, you saw it on the news. He's a close person, family friend of mine. Congratulate him on retiring after 70 years of driving a school bus, and it's just amazing. Also, I want to send my condolences to the family of Ms. Lottie Fenwick. I was a tenant of young land myself, and she was a very important person in Suffolk, and she will be greatly missed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.